The one with the change. And there's the airport committee.
I've been in Raleigh.
Airport's coming on after our chief.
Yep, I saw that. That's the scene.
Yeah.
Yep. I've even been through new one now, just both on the old one.
The whole thing. Well, I had a multi chief tell me not to replant that because it was just.
Well, this is not fifty.
One percent.
Oh.
So they said they'll kill the trees.
Yeah, that's right. Right, Pat?
Right.
Maybe I need an extra phone call.
Hello.
Hello, how are you?
I wanted to ask you about another meeting.
I had sent you another.
No, 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 not that meeting, this is about financial finance. And we are looking at it for twenty-nine, which is Wednesday.
I'm ready to go.
At one o'clock.
Yep, it is, okay, let me just say.
March twenty-nine.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So, we're live. Everybody ready? In a while, it's not even making sense, okay?
Is it not gonna be here?
Are you already down? What?
What?
This is not gonna be, it's not gonna be. Okay. What's happening? Ready?
Yep.
Ready?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I'd like to welcome you to the City of Oxford Board of Commissioners's regular monthly meeting. Today is Tuesday, March fourteenth, twenty twenty-three, and it is seven P.M. And we are assembled here in the city, in the Commissioners' Boardroom in City Hall. And, uh, I would like to read the mission of the city before we proceed, which is that the mission of the city is to serve and improve our community by providing high-quality, affordable services, sound planning for growth and development, and by offering the highest possible quality of life while maintaining the public's trust through open communication and ethical standards at all times. And I would like to also extend regrets on behalf of Commissioner Bullock, who is under the weather and therefore unable to attend. For any of you that have electronic devices, we ask that you please either turn them off or use them at this time. And with that, I would like to invite Reverend Glenn Dollsmith of Oxford United Methodist Church. For those of you who are so inclined, he will open our meeting in prayer. Thank you.
Let us pray. Almighty and eternal God, you poured out your courage on your servant Abraham and guided him to a new place to take on a new mission. You poured out your wisdom on your servant Solomon so that he might govern well. You poured out a spirit of justice upon your prophets, people such as Isaiah, Amos. We pray together tonight that you would pour out your spirit of courage and wisdom and justice upon all those who hold office in this city. That with your love and steadfast purpose, they may faithfully serve all those who live in this place. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you so much for having me, that was beautiful.
So I would like to.
With that, I would, um, invite our Commissioner Seth Monkins to lead us in the pledge allegiance.
He rises in face of the banner flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner. At this time, we'll consider adjustments to and approval of the agenda. And before we go to the item at your seat, recall that our city clerk sent out, um, a reminder that item C under delegations will be an update on the Henderson Oxford Airport by Amanda Welch, who is the manager of K H N Z, which is the call numbers to the airport, fly H N Z. And that, uh, Ms. Bowen sent that out to the board earlier, but if you do not have it on the agenda in your packet, that goes under item C. And we have also been distributed an add-on item or an item to consider to potentially add-on, um, from Amy Ratliff, our engineer, and the subject is a roundabout at Williamsboro Street and New College Street and Villem Street intersection. And quite surprising that NCDOT approached us at the end of last week about the possibility of creating a roundabout at that intersection prior to paving Williamsboro Street, which is currently scheduled to take place in the next thirty to forty-five days. And that, of course, before proceeding, this, all of the new departments did need to thoroughly review the schematics to make sure that it would actually work. But there is a request that we attach, we add this to the current agenda.
Yeah, the other item was the memorandum for the finance director.
Yes. Okay, so we have two items, yeah, thank you, Mr. Harrell, that we have a memorandum of understanding that Mr. Harrell would like to add that we consider or that the board considers to engage Hawk Ung on an N-as-needed basis at the price of sixty dollars an hour. So we have those two items. What is the pleasure of the board?
I'll make a motion that we add them on.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Toby, is there any discussion there, Toby? Okay. Uh, with that motion, all in favor, signal so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any close like sign? The agenda stands adopted with the addition of the two add-on items, one from Mr. Harrell, one from our city engineer, Amy Ratliff. In order to provide for the highest standards of behavior and transparency, our board has approved a code of ethics to establish guidelines for ethical standards for ourselves and to provide guidance in determining appropriate conduct, among those that we should avoid impropriety in the exercise of our official duties and should conduct the affairs of the board in an open and public manner. I now inquire whether any board member knows of any conflict of interest or appearance of such with respect to any matters whatsoever to board. If any of you do know of a conflict of interest or appearance of such, please state so at this time. Yes, sir.
Madam Mayor, item M, we have spoken about this before. I am a member of the Board of GLT. I just want to make it for the, for the public, but I am a member of the Board at the Grand Little Theatre, but I don't gain anything from this item.
Absolutely. You are an unpaid.
I'm an unpaid, yeah.
Volunteer, yes, sir.
Uh, I just want to make it known with respect to the addition of the roundabout, that I have interest in the property at that intersection. It does not appear that this will directly impact the property. And I have not been approached by DOT for any, for any such reason, but I just want to make, for the record, that I'm acknowledging that I do not believe that I have any conflict of interest with respect to this add-on.
Okay, excellent, thank you very much for making both of those points, we appreciate it. And with that, we will continue forward under delegations. And normally, the first item that we have is to acknowledge the Morgan Run employee of the month. There were no nominations this month, so we're having a pause. We'll happily say to all of you, please consider the employees that are making an impact on you and submitting their names for a nomination for future months. We would appreciate that. With that, we will invite Chief David Cottrell of the Fire Department to come forward and give us an update on what's happening there. Thank you, Chief.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Um, the board has directed, the department heads, to give an update, um, each month at the board meeting, and this happens to be my day. So I'm glad to deliver this message. Uh, talk to the city manager, and we want to kind of keep this elevated conversation, um, so that the community as well as our citizens as well as the board understand who the fire department is and what we do. So that's what we're gonna get. If we can make this work.
Is it on?
Yeah. Our mission statement, I'll read it out loud for the ones that have trouble on that side of the room. Uh, the Oxford Fire Department is committed to the preservation and protection of life, property, and the environment from adverse effects of fire and other hazardous conditions through sustained training, progressive education, and constant diligence to provide the highest level of customer service. To achieve these goals, we provide community outreach and prevention, rapid and professional fire suppression, rescue services, and respond to any other related emergencies. Our mission is accomplished by professionally trained personnel from the community through teamwork and innovation. Uh-oh. There we go, thank you. You see me do this, you push the button.
Are you sure it's on? Cause it's brand-new batteries.
Yeah, I clicked it like five times, so. Um, moving forward, a little history on the fire department, in case you didn't know. Uh, several large fires in the mid eighteen hundreds prompted some citizens of Oxford to organize the Oxford Hook and Lighter Company, which is a private company, on January thirty-first, eighteen seventy-six. This organization was primarily a bucket brigade and was intermittently active for the next twenty or so years. The group was reorganized in nineteen oh five as the Edwards Hose and Lighter Company, which was named after their leader, which was J. Frank Edwards. This fire company became the official fire department for the town of Oxford and retained its name until it became the Oxford Fire Department officially in nineteen fifteen. Thank you. So Oxford Fire Department organizational structure, we are a combination fire department, which means we have full-time, part-time, and volunteer firefighters. If you look at those numbers, we have a fire chief, we have an assistant chief, three captains, two lieutenants, an engineer inspector, uh, two engineers, and we have a complement of nine part-time and twenty volunteers. So if you do the math, half of our complement of firefighters is volunteer firefighters from your community. And with that being said, this would be my little, um, I guess advertisement. If you'd like to become a volunteer firefighter, or you know somebody that would, send them my way. We are a class-three ISO organization. In short services office, they are responsible for determining the rate of, uh, your insureds. So the numbers go from one to ten, ten is unrated, one is the best. We're currently a three. When I started with the Oxford Fire Department in nineteen ninety-four, give or take, we were a seven. We have progressed down to a three, and if we keep following the path that we're following and our budget goes well, we're gonna move down to a two. A one is the best that you can get in the state, and there's only twenty-two out of thirteen hundred sixty-one fire departments in the state of North Carolina right now that are class one. And that includes fire departments like Charlotte, Winston-Salem, Raleigh, and all those. So you've got to see that we're, we're doing pretty good as far as comparisons, um, with other fire departments. We try to provide the best service we can for our citizens, um, even though we are a smaller agency, but we all do the same job. Thank you. Uh, our fleet consists of, uh, aerial platform, and you see the, the year models, aerial platform, a commercial pump, a tanker, a medium rescue, a cast engine, a seventy-five-foot quint, and a special operations trailer. That is all housed at our Station One Fire Department, which is on McClanahan Street, address is one twelve McClanahan Street. Feel free, feel free to drop out at address anytime during the day, on weekends. We're glad to show you our fleet, talk to you about public education, assist you with your needs, and talk, fire extinguisher, whatever that you may want to talk about. But like I said, we're open to the community. Okay? Our core services, fire rescue, hazmat, public education, and safety compliance inspections. That is our main job from Monday through Friday, eight to five, and nights and weekends. Safety inspections, we try to conduct those during normal business hours. We try to be very responsible, respectful to our business community. Sometimes we have to do them on the weekend because there may be code violations that we find, or overcrowding, things like that, or people that are violating our own, uh, code ordinances or our general statutes, but everything else is handled most times during business hours. Public education can be anytime. Fire rescue and hazmat response, like of course, is anytime, okay? Our programming, we have a child passenger safety seat installation station. This is permanent with Oxford Fire Department. We will install your seat if you have one. We will check your seat that's already been installed to make sure it's installed correctly. Or if there's a financial, um, issue, come see us, and we have avenues to help you and assist you get a seat to put in your car so we make sure that these children are safe as they're being transported, um, throughout our community and pretty much anywhere. Especially rescue, we do high angle, which is demonstrate the left-hand side. We do below grade, we do confined space rescue, we do vehicle rescue, agricultural rescue, machinery rescue. We have airbags, hydraulic equipment, um, thousands-foot rope, harnesses, anything that you may need. The closest rescue team, which is the regional rescue team, RRT four, is based out of Raleigh and Wake County. So we try to provide as much service we possibly can because of delay in the next available service, which is coming down the road. Okay? Additional programming, we have a school resource program where we actually solicit donations from our business community, and anybody private can also donate. We use those funds to purchase educational materials for elementary age school students, and that's not just the City of Oxford. We distribute these materials throughout the entire county. If a child received a book in Grandville County that came from the Oxford Fire Department, we've been doing this for right at thirty-six years. So that program has been sustained before I got there and well into my tenure here, so. We also have a smoke detector program that's been going on for about twenty-six years. We solicit, um, donations for smoke detectors. We get them from the state, we get them from local organizations, we get them from places like Home Depot. Anybody that's willing to donate a smoke detector, we will take. We do door-to-door inspections, we take phone calls, and we visit our community, and we have an open house. If you need a smoke detector, it's available, um, with the release, um, liability being signed, we will actually help you install it. If you don't need help installing it, but you need one, you come see us, and we can provide it to you, just a document that we just fill out, so we know the locations put, um, place that, and then we can map it out. We use GIS to map all installations, so we know exactly which areas that we hit from door to door as to where the smoke detector is installed by address, so. Digital programming, hydrant maintenance. You didn't see us out in the streets last year. Uh, there was a lot of work going on with the water system. Uh, we didn't want to interrupt it and cause issues, so we did not do this. But we're responsible for flushing and flow testing all of the fire hydrants, um, within the purview of the City of Oxford, and now slightly over seven hundred of those. I cannot give you an exact number, and I'm actually a numberless person, because we have some that have been moved from one location to the other to better fit the need, that have been replaced completely because of the age of wear, and some that have been added that we're missing to start with. So once those numbers provided to us, when we get aspects for the, um, water system work and is being done, we'll have a little bit more, uh, exact number for that. Those, uh, those flows, um, are translated into color codes. If you see that top of the hydrant is blue, so we have red, orange, green, and blue, depending on how much the hydrant flows. It gives the engineers, um, a quick sight, and they recognize what the best available hydrant in the community is. So if we run up to a house mid-block in one corner, it's a green hydrant, and opposite corner, it's a red hydrant, we're gonna pull from the green hydrant and have more flow available for the, to fight that fire with. So that's the purpose of that, so. So NFPA code, code two ninety-one, it designates what those flows and those colors will be. Additionally to that, we do fire brigade training. Uh, we actually get out with our industry, and we actually train their employees to, for incipient firefighting. They have hose lines in place in some of the industry, others they have only fire extinguishers. We actually visit those industries, we take their employees by ship, and then we show them how to fight those incipient fires, how to use the equipment, how to advance the hoses, so that we can further reduce any damage through early recognition that a fire may cause to that business. Because we want to keep the business going, we want to keep it viable, we don't want the employees to have to be put out of work, we don't want the business to, to shut down because of loss of revenue. So we try to react as quick as possible, and training these, um, employees is one way to do it. Thank you. In our community, uh, we try to reach as many people as possible. We do it through Facebook, we do it through home visits, we visit group homes, hospitals, the industry, like I said, but we also annually have an open house. Covid kind of shut us down a little bit, but this year we're gonna get back on it. Through that open house, we invite the community, both the city and the county, anybody that, that sees a flyer or sees it on Facebook is welcome. We'll provide a meal, simple meal, hot dog, pizza, popcorn, things of that nature. Invite you in, we're gonna have games for the kids, we're gonna do demonstrations to kind of showcase what we learned throughout our career. We also are gonna have like a, a truck show, so you can come and, everybody likes to see a fire truck, everybody likes to see the equipment, see what it does. And that's a good way for the community to understand who we are and for us to meet the people in the community. So, uh, we welcome you. Like I said, it comes during the fall of the year. I don't have a date as of yet, um, but once that is announced, um, we'll pass it on to the city clerk, she put it out, and we'll put it on our own Facebook page. Okay? Additional services, these are a little bit further between. This is our firefighters that are actually helping put a roof on a lady's house that could not afford to do it. The shingles were donated, we donated the manpower, and once the liability was taken care of, so the city and the fire department held any liability, we got there, helped strip the roof, uh, put the paper and the, uh, shingles back on. This is time, um, a lot of time donated is, like you, like you saw earlier in the, in the slides, we only have a limited workforce, so we had to make sure that, you know, we cover our town and we protect our citizens, but we try to, um, do these things as we can. So, actually, that's part of our community effort to kind of give back, kind of selfless service type of deal, so, okay? Thank you. Also, we have a drone services. As you can see here, that's our drone that we have, we've been having for about five and a half years now. Uh, we use that to document events, to help other departments do surveys, take pictures like Devon or ball fields or, or whatever that we need to do. We use them for lost individuals, people have walked away from the hospital, have walked away from a rest home to group homes, uh, missing subjects, law enforcement, uh, whatever comes up, um, that drone's available. It is actually has, uh, two cameras, there's a four K visual camera, which is a normal picture you see here, it also has a flare or infrared camera, so we can see at night and through smoke. So we use that, if we had a large fire on a commercial facility, um, instead of putting a person on the roof to walk the roof, you know, through unseen conditions such as a lot of smoke, we could actually put the drone in the air, take a look at the roof, see what's compromised, see where the fire's at, um, see the conditions of it before we put a foot on that, on that membrane and actually take a chance on hurting somebody. So we, it's a lot of use to it. It's, it's expensive, but we were able to get a grant for that, so that helped us out a lot. Okay? Additional community, like I said, one of the big things that we do, part of our core values, is public education. Grants is a big thing for our fire department. Over the years, we have been very lucky, we have received grants for radios, for, um, air cleaning systems, exhaust systems for our bays to get the diesel exhaust, the particular exhaust out of our bay. We have received air compressor grants, and it turned about forty thousand dollars to replace our breathing air compressor. You see firefighters on TV, you see us, we wear air packs on our back, that's to clean air that we used to go inside of a smoke or hazardous environment, um, that air compressor to actually fill those bottles. Now it's about fifty-five thousand, we got the grants about forty thousand. So these, these grants, uh, help relieve the citizens of, of a taxpayer dollar going to that item that we can get through grant items. But if you see here, we got a recent grant of a, uh, sign to go in front of our building. Uh, that sign was about forty, uh, twenty-four thousand dollars. Uh, we got it, uh, one hundred percent, uh, there's no matching funds for that, and we're trying to get that, um, put in now. Uh, we're placing it there to actually mark the holes in the concrete to make sure that the anchor is in the right place, and then we'll put the utilities in to the, uh, hundred twenty-volt AC power so we can actually power that sign, and it'll be remotely, um, controlled through wifi in the building. And it is protected, so don't ride by and think you're gonna hack it, put your own message on it. We cut it off if you do that, so. But that's one of our ways to outreach for the community. So we use that to put messages up such as volunteers needed, change your smoke detector, there's a sign ordinance in place in the city, you cannot change, um, the message within so many minutes or seconds, we're gonna follow that and make sure that we hear that. We are a city, a city entity, we're not gonna break the rules, we're gonna do exactly what we're supposed to do. So if you ride by, the message may not change, circle the block, it may, may be different, so. Just so you know, it's not gonna flash at you. All right? Thank you. As to the future, uh, one thing that we're looking at, um, volunteerism, like I said, we do have a fifty percent complement of volunteers. We're looking at training requirements, the standards, it's a lot to do as a volunteer. You have your normal, um, life, you have your family, you have your job, but the training to be a volunteer is pretty in-depth. And you enter the same environment that we enter, do the same job that we do, and we do a little bit more with the rescue and with the, um, the engineer side for operating the trucks and things as far as fighting the fire. It doesn't matter which hat you wear, if you pay to not, it still has a situation, so. There's a lot of training requirements, so the volunteerism is going down. Uh, we're starting to see, um, some manpower issues with that, concerns. It's kind of what it is nationally, you know, volunteers for every organization, not just fire departments are decreasing. Uh, we're feeling the effects of it, we're trying to compensate for it, and we're keeping an eye on it as we move along. Uh, apparatus and, um, equipment, a lot of our equipment has, uh, timestamps from the second we buy it. Like I turn our gear, for example, has to be replaced every ten years regardless of condition. If it looks just like it did when we bought it ten years later, we can no longer use it. We have to take it out of service, get new gear. So we have to keep an eye on that, our air packs have a lifespan. A lot of those we have that have to be rotated in and out, rope has a lifespan on it, so it's a lot as far as, um, logistics to keep up with. Apparatus, you know, you saw from the previous slide, our aerial truck, the ninety-five footer is twenty-five years old. Looking at it, you may not think so, but, you know, when you get up on it, when you operate it, and when you, um, when you look at the dates when it was purchased till today, like I said, it's a twenty-five-year-old truck. So we got to kind of look at what we're gonna do, how we prepare to move forward, that type of thing. Growth, you know, everybody talks about what goes on, you know, we see at least three, some divisions moving dirt right now and several more to come. We take, um, that information and we translate it into call volume. How's the call volume gone up in the last couple of years and what it looks like? You know, what's gonna be the requirements for manpower, we need additional stations, staffing, um, how's it gonna affect our service delivery? The more things we put in, like, you know, the roundabouts, and the stoplights and stop signs, and, and adding streets to our, our town, it takes us longer to get there. The more traffic we have, because the population increases, you know, there's more things that we have to consider, and we have to be safe when we go from one place to the next driving, you know, fifty thousand-pound trucks that are forty-six foot long. So, you know, there's lots of things that we do behind the scenes that the average person doesn't know about, but, um, but we are thinking about it. It is, it's, it's in the front of our mind, not the back of it, because we want to make sure that we offer the best service to the community, to the citizens, and that we prepare ourselves perpetually, so when we're not here, the next people in our spots are taking our place or holding our position, that they could just kind of go from where we left off and not having to rebuild, so. And that's it, so if you have any questions, I'd be glad to take them right now. Yes, sir.
So we've got a lot of development going on, like you indicated, and I don't know if this question's good for you or Amy, but do we require the developers to put in, um, fire safety apparatus? Just, you know, as they build new?
Fire alarms and fire hydrants.
Fire alarms, smoke alarms, and stuff like that.
All this by code. So the city has an ordinance that whether it's residential, commercial, or business, you have to have a fire hydrant within so many feet of whatever happens to be. The line, the fire line, the laterals, and feeders have to be certain sizes to, to fit that community, you know, whether it's residential or whether it's business. Individually speaking, the business has its own requirements. An assembly has an requirement it has to meet, such as sprinkler systems, fire alarms, schools have requirements. So as it, as it goes through the planning phase, and as Cheryl receives the information, she passes on to all departments. We all review it, you know, whether, you know, Parks and Recreation reviews it for green spaces, or Amy reviews it for the, for the, uh, substructure under the ground, or we review it for fire protection, access roads, turning radiuses, uh, weight limits for the, for the roads, um, hydrant placement, sprinkler systems, all that stuff. It's all done through that, um, progression phase, and then hopefully by the time we reach the CEO, we cover everything.
And did I hear you say roundabout, roundabout slow the ability of fire trucks?
So, think about this.
Okay.
Um, fire truck doesn't be in. It's forty-six, it's forty-six foot long, and we go up through residential neighborhoods, and, and I'll just use Spring Street and Main Street for an example. A lot of times, we avoid it. Amy, during the design process, you know, we had several conversations, that's why you notice that the roundabout does not have a true curb and gutter. It actually has a tapered side. Push comes to shove, we can run across that and keep straight down that street. So as long as we have the forethought to, to do those things, then we can plan for the future. But if we put ten roundabouts here, and we put several stoplights and stop signs, and we don't plan for those accordingly, and we can have, and we increase traffic by having, you know, more than the nine thousand five hundred people that we have, give or take, or whatever it is, then it adds traffic to the stoplights on the short streets, and then we have to find alternate ways, or we have to maneuver safely through that traffic. Because once you turn this iron on, turn the lights on, it kind of breaks loose. Some people know to move one way, some others, the best thing to do is just stay still and let us go around you, so.
Thank you.
I'd like, questions from anyone else? Okay?
I'd just like to thank, uh, the fire department for all, for all they do. Uh, I don't think the citizens of the town sometimes realize everything that goes on in the background.
Absolutely.
I do have a statement I'd like to make also. Um, I'm the HR Safety Manager for Get Precast Company, and last year, um, thanks to your department, I was able to train seventy-five of my employees on hands-on fire extinguisher training, and I think that's so important. So, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dave.
And that's part of the purpose of doing these reports from departments is because I think a lot of times, a lot of the work that gets done is unseen and. And, and people need to have a sense of, uh, how hard staff works and the quality and the level of service that they are offering to the community. So thank you very much, Chief, it was a great afternoon, you've learned a lot.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. And with that, we would like to invite, um, our impromptu person who, who, productionist, that's right, who handled that. And Commissioner Lumpkins to come forward, uh, to present the update on the Henderson-Oxford Airport. And that's Amanda Welsh, who's the manager out there, along with Commissioner Lumpkins, who is our representative to, uh, the airport board.
All right, thank you, um, yes, I'm excited to talk about the airport here. So the airport is a joint airport between governing bodies of the cities of Oxford and Henderson, and also Bramble County and Vance County. So there's, there's four parties, or four partners. And they all, all four partners need to provide funding for the airport. And, um, so my involvement as an appointed representative for Oxford, um, on the airport board of directors. Um, I've been, been on the board for almost a year, I think. Um, it's been an amazing experience, uh, so far to be able to learn about, you know, everything that goes on at the airport and all the future, future plans that they do have. Uh, it's, it's really exciting to see, um, and also the benefits to, to the communities, um, things you don't even think about. So there are many exciting things going on at the airport, um, and, and like I said, many plans for the future, which Amanda will touch on as well. So, uh, now to tell you what's happening at the airport, we have Amanda Welsh here, um, she is the manager at the airport, and it's been a pleasure to work with her.
Thank you so much, Commissioner, and thank you, Ms. Welsh.
Thank you. Um, yes, I am here for the airport today. Um, I've pre-placed your handout, um, so you have just my slides just quick here. I don't want to take any more of your time, I know you go pretty darn down the alphabet, um, in your agenda tonight, so. We'll be quick, and if you have any questions, um, well, at the end, we'll, we'll talk about that as well. Um, but I wanted to get some recently completed projects, some big news, um, in front of you. So we just finished, uh, right before the end of the year, our runway rehabilitation. This was a necessary paving project. Airport paving is, um, is well, is highly engineered more so, well, not maybe nor so, but differently than, um, roadway paving. So this is a big project, um, to repave, and this had not been done in the last approximately ten to fifteen years. So it was way overdue and, and ready. This was a ninety-nine-one grant, um, that we had federal, state, and local. And actually, I think it ended up being a ninety-ten, um, federal and state, so, which is always great, so that didn't take any local involvement. Um, this required a thirty-day runway shutdown, coordination with all of the, uh, controllers and airplanes such, uh, many contractors, and we finished under budget and early. So, anytime a paving project can do that, I, I feel proud of all our contractors. A lot of local contractors, Sunrock, Butner, um, and Michael Baker, and, um, and some other lo, local contractors worked on that, so we're always happy to see that. That made the Sunrock, Butner, um, newsletter our, our project, so they did a lot of good, um, technical mixes for our cements and, and premix there. Um, if you'll go ahead, um, recently, I, I finished my NC Airport Professional Training. So this is a program, multi-year, put onto the NC DOT Division of Aviation. Um, NC State, ITRI, I don't know if any of you know, the Institute for, um, Transportation Research and Engineering. Puts on a program, this is just, now I have a designation, as do, uh, as of right now, I think thirty-six of my, uh, airport colleagues, more coming, of course. Um, that we are certified in the workings of the NC Division of Aviation, um, and our airports themselves. So that's always been really, really helpful here, specifically as we move into our, um, you can move on, our twenty-year plan development. Um, this is a FAA-required project to, we're working with Mar Arnold, which is a consultancy. Um, to do our improvement plan. Um, our near-future improvements include moving our fuel storage tanks to above ground. Um, we're gonna do a taxiway relocation for additional standards. We're looking into a brand-new terminal or FBO, what we call up building, um, and we're looking for hangar improvements and new hangars to meet our growth needs. Our airport is growing, um, it's growing from business, it's growing from general aviation to citizens, um, and it's growing from training, uh, from other airports as well. So, um, I did not go into a, a great depth, uh, here, I'm just hitting some highlights, I don't want to take much of your time. I would encourage you, um, and invite you to give me some time to go into great depth. If you guys would like to come by, we'd love to host you, come out, see the airport, see some planes. Um, hopefully not see as much fog as in that, that picture to the right, you can usually see the, uh, runway there, but that's a real low day. You know, come out on a beautiful day, um, Commissioner Lumpkins actually, and I will coordinate with you if, if we need to do whatever coordination that's involved there. Um, but we'd love to show you more detail in our twenty-year plan, more detail about the day-to-day operations, uh, and more detail about our businesses on the field. Um, speaking of businesses on the field, this is our other packet, this is hot and fresh, about, we're about still going on these. If you look in the back, inside of the back page, this is generally the Division of Aviation bringing this out every year, so this is our brand-new one for this year. It shows you a good deal, but on that back page there, that's, all of my stuff was interesting, but this is what matters, the numbers here. So we're Henderson-Oxford, right there, third of the way down, you can see our economic development numbers. The jobs supported, the income supported, and the tax and economic output, um, that is calculated and estimated and, and surrounded, um, that the airport provides. And now these are numbers that the airport does, um, directly and indirectly, so there aren't sixty people working at the airport. Um, but that is sixty jobs that would not be available were it not able for businesses to use the airport for their flights, et cetera. Things like that. So that's really our big money there, like, it's, I'll just read those off for everybody else who's, who's interested here. I lost my, there we go. Sixty jobs are created, four point eight million dollars of personal income, uh, seven hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars of state and local taxes, and fifteen million of economic output. Um, is what we're looking at. Uh, and that is pretty much the twenty-twenty-two, they, they number these, you know, year such, so.
Colleagues, questions from Ms. Welsh?
Yes, yes, sir.
So, Ms. Welsh, I remember, um, it, it's been a few years back, but we heard from the airport. And we found out that the airport lost business because of some issues with the runway. Uh, meaning, you know, we have a lot of institutions in Butner, and, you know, where people have to be transported, and I'm speaking specifically of, um, our prisons. And we lost the contract of some of the, you know, those, um, they were landing planes in other areas and then transporting. And I was wondering, are we able to pick back up on those contracts?
So I can speak on that, that was probably over ten years ago now, um, so that was pre-me when that happened.
Okay.
But, um, I know of it, I know of what happened, um, I can say that I believe that was also pre the runway extension.
Right.
And so, um, yes, so we are in the process of talking with them, but also we have more than made up for that business in local businesses. Um, specifically that have come on since, um, I have been at the airport. Um, and had a good steady FBO, which, which is basically the airport service station presence. So that we can have local business feel good about coming, feel good about the fuel pumps, feel good about the services that we're able to get them. And, um, don't have to fly into Raleigh and, and drive up. So we have more than made up for that. Um, and also, we are, we are, um, we are in, I have a, a commissioner that's in, uh, talks with them at the moment as well to see what can be done about that.
Right, because this is a safety issue.
So the safety issue was, was absolutely taken care of, and so the, the lack of safety, um, problems there is, is a, is a past one. Yeah, that has been remedied, the unsafe condition there.
Excellent, thank you. Other questions?
So that was half of my question.
Was it? Oh, okay.
And the other half?
And the, the other half is, um, at the moment, I forget, is it the nine thousand foot runway?
So we have a fifty-five hundred foot, um, foot runway. That is a, that is a standard, like a good base standard, that's an excellent runway length. So we did have, before I was, uh, with the airport, um, we had an extension, and so both, if you're under that length, you're a small airport.
Right.
Things, you can't get things, that, that's, that's limiting. Once we're at fifty-five hundred, which we are now, fifty-five oh one was our last, uh, survey. Um, we are able to receive all manner of flights, um, up to, uh, you know, Gulfstream five-fifties, you know, some of the biggest business jets. So now that we're at that length, um, you know, all airports, they, oh, we could be longer, you can always be longer, but they're, this is a good, you know, the, we're, we're where we need to be in length.
In conjunction with, uh, David, uh, Chief Cottrell, what about the fire aspects out there, the fire services out there?
So we actually, um, had a chance to test our fire services last week with a brush fire, um, from a neighbor that, that, of course, on a very windy day blew through. Um, chain link fences don't stop fires, so. Um, so yes, thank you, I wanted to thank, thank the, every all the fire departments. Uh, we had multi, um, uh, people response, multi? Thank you, agency, thank you very much. A multi-agency response, including, um, even the Forest Service, who took, um, point on that call. Um, so yes, we, uh, we have coverage from all agencies. Our first agency is actually, our first responding agency is actually a volunteer, Oxford-Royal Volunteer Agency. So we really do appreciate, and, uh, if anybody knows of anybody who, you know, has any interest, uh, we'd appreciate as well, the, anybody volunteering for the fire department. Yeah, I know they need it, especially we are, we are our first agency is, is volunteer.
Thank you.
Any other question? I just have a couple then. I, I was wondering for, for those that do not know you, if you would give, one, a quick background on what, how you got to Oxford. How long have you been with our airport? And then when you are on site out there, what you're having to say.
Sure, so, um, my name is Amanda Welsh again. Um, my actual, I, I manage the airport, I have the contract for the management position. And, um, my, my family business also leases space, and we are the FBO fixed base operator at the airport. Again, that is a service station terms that we use for airplanes, FBO. Um, so we do maintenance out there, we fuel, we coordinate cars and rooms and everything for anybody who needs to fly in and needs those services. Um, we, um, started that in October of twenty nineteen, no, I'm sorry, eighteen, sorry, talk about when I moved. Um, my husband and I did, uh, similar work at the Franklin County Airport, um, as far as FBO services. And so we stepped into the FBO and then also Management Department, I also managed a dental office before that, so. We've, we've been Oxford residents since fall of twenty nineteen, when we were able to move up, so.
You're getting your teeth into it, then.
We are, we are, we're really, we're really moving along. Um, and then we're, the airport is staffed from eight to five Monday through Saturday and one to five Sunday. Um, we always have call-out hours, uh, one of our big call-out, um, partners, uh, people who call us out is the Duke Life Flight Helicopters. So if you see them out and about frequently, we fuel them to get them to where they need to go, um, to save people out and about specifically. Not just hospital to hospitals, so. We see a lot of excitement like that, um, after hours, and if anything is necessary after hours, we are on call twenty-four-seven, so.
Excellent, thank you. And lastly, I recall being in this room for a presentation, there were various run, I believe it was runway proposals and design options and?
You came for our twenty-year plan options, yes.
So that was not part of what you just showed us a slide for?
So, um, yeah, that, that's our twenty-year plan that we're developing right now, so.
Okay.
Out of that, that is being approved right now, that has to be FAA and NC DOA approved, so that's in the approval process. We actually just got it back for first, uh, comment and, and edits. Um, so we'll be, um, we'll be bringing that out shortly in its final form. Um, just knowing that a couple of these things that I've listed, we have in there and they're likely to stay in there. So I don't have the entire details, and I will have a map as well, um, that shows our, our planned mapped areas, which is always nice to see, so.
Excellent.
Yeah, well, thank you guys.
Anything else?
Yeah, but I, I will say some of the future plans that I've seen are really exciting, I mean, the growth that we can come there and bring to the community. But I just wanted to thank Amanda, I know you are busy because, um, I live in Oxford Park and all the planes fly over my house when they land. So I see them all the time, so, um, thank you.
Thank you, yeah, and anybody, um, in the, uh, audience who, who lives nearby and does see that, just think every time an airplane, we get a, uh, a movement of, of an airplane. Um, that's money essentially, so. Think of all the, uh, you know, the barbecues that you just watch, oh man, I've seen that guy a lot, well, he's probably training and, and don't worry, we, uh, we collect all of that data. And, um, the DOA requires all of that, and that's our funding, so.
Excellent, well, thank you very much, we appreciate you taking the time.
Absolutely, come out, yes, we'll, we'll get that for you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we move forward to the public comments portion of our agenda, where, uh, residents and stakeholders can speak on agenda as well as non-agenda items. And we have, first here is James Tabron coming to speak about the Plumber Chitum Harrisburg Cemetery. And if you, Mr. Tabron, will come forward to the podium. And identify yourself and your address, sorry, there you are, wonderful. And so for the purposes of the record, when you get to the podium, restate your name and your address, so we may have that down.
My name is James Tabron, I live in Durham, North Carolina. My address is eleven oh six Jerome Road. Zip code is two seven seven zero three. I want to first of all, to the mayor, to the mayor pro tem, to the commissioners, just thank you for this opportunity to just appear before you for a few moments. I, along with my partner, Mr. Len Graham, are the owners now of the old Harrisburg and the Plumber Chitum Cemetery. It is a special opportunity for us, and in addition to considering ourselves owners, our role is very much that of wanting to be a restorer. Of these two historically significant sites in the neighborhood. And those of you perhaps may have had a chance to pass by it in the recent past, may notice some efforts that are currently underway to, in keeping with the mission of this city. To enhance the quality of life. And we think that that clearly applies to facilities like this. There's a noteworthy history in this community, and Len and I are just extraordinarily glad and delighted to be in this neighborhood. This is much more than just a, um, a, a, an initiative to just get involved in the community. But we really want to provide something that you all, when you go by it, when you look at it, you will feel good about it. Folks who perhaps may have the opportunity to revisit loved ones who are entered there, who, who may be considering, um, that as a potential burial site for family members in the future, will feel good about it. We want it to look the way it should. We cast no aspersions against any of the prior efforts which have taken place, but I think you all know that it unfortunately did kind of move into a state of disrepair. It's not a question of how that happened or why that happened, it was a question in terms of as far as they're not concerned, where do we go from here? And, um, you see, uh, what will be a continuing effort. The old Harrisburg Cemetery is just so full of history. And we want that to be something that the large community outside of Oxford, outside of Granville, will have reason to want to come here. And just look at some of the luminaries who are entered there, and part of what we want to do is to help to create that in a, in a, in a much more visual fashion. So these restoration efforts will continue. We are aware of the fact that portion of that area is not in city limits. While that is the case, it's not our focus, what we would hope might be a service asset in the future is that this body will give consideration to making this a part of the fabric of what Len and I know is a very wonderful community. We are here really for the long haul, and we asked, not for comments now, unless you deem it appropriate, but we would like for you to think about how that area can be? that area can be made a part of the city limits as opposed to how it, how it currently, uh, is set up. In terms of funding, um, we would ask, because of how we really want to restore this area, and we're willing to make investments ourselves, and we have in fact done that. But we would hope that in keeping with what we understand to be the posture of this body, relative to providing funded consideration to, to other cemeteries in the area, that that will continue, that that will be the case as far as the Old Harrisburg Plumber Cheatham Cemetery is concerned. We think that that would be a very worthwhile investment for this community, and we are hoping that you will give it a favorable level of consideration, uh, in the future. As far as Len and I are concerned, Len Graham, we do want to continue to demonstrate as best we can our desire to do more than just talk the talk. We do want to walk the walk in a way with investment that has been made. Uh, we continue to work with a number of local, uh, business, um, businesses to assist us in that effort. We plan to continue doing that. And while I may have given my home address as Durham, I know my partner Len is, 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 has already purchased a house in, in the Oxford community, so this is just not a pop-in, pop-out kind of a thing, and you'll see that over time. But I, in keeping with the, um, timeframe allotted us, and I don't want to overextend that, but I do want to, in terms of my closing comments, to say first of all, thank you to you, thank you to the community. We want you to feel good about our presence here. We really, really do. We want you to know where we live, so if necessary, you can find us. Uh, we, we're not going to run it out. And to this body, uh, if there are any questions that you would like to ask Len Graham or me, it would be our absolute pleasure to ask them as best we can, and if we can't, rest assured that we will get back to you in a very prompt fashion with a very straight-up, honest answer, so those are my comments now.
Yes, Commissioner. And then Commissioner Bridges, Togi.
All right.
Yes, sir.
Just, just a, a couple of questions. Have you looked into any grants? All right, I'm not sure, any grants available, federal, state grants available?
Well, we, we are, we are in the process of doing that now, to be very honest with you, um. Uh, we don't want to leave any stones unturned. Uh, we don't want to just focus on one area of, of, of support when there are others that are available. So, we are working with some folks in the local community. Uh, we are clearly, clearly gearing a tremendous amount of our effort to do just that very thing. And as those grants are secured, uh, we want you all to be aware of them. We want to let you all know what's happening. We want to know the kinds of investments that hopefully through our collective, that is not just ours, we'll be able to bring additional revenue to this community to do more good things. This is, this is a place that, that Len and I are really glad to have been blessed enough to have a connection with. I know it may sound like rhetoric, rhetoric right now, but in time, you'll see that those statements, that statement is extremely sincere.
It's important.
Yeah, I was just curious, you know, what prompted this interest that you have in doing this, one thing? And then, what are your most immediate needs relative to, because it sounds like y'all are doing some things, but is there something that, 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 that this board or you're in need of quickly?
Well, in terms of your first question, what, what, what prompted our looking at this area was the promise and the opportunity from a business perspective that we felt existed here in this area. It's just got to say that straight up and straight out. With regards to what we need, the needs in terms of the restoration effort of that cemetery, it's enormous. It's, it's enormous. Uh, you walk through the area, and I'm sure many of you are familiar with how tombstones have been tipped over.
Yes.
Graves have, have sunk.
Yes.
Potholes exist throughout. Um, uh, the overgrown brush, the fencing that you may have once seen that was out in front of it was just, didn't look good. Um, and there is something that Len and I refer to as this concept of curb appeal. It's like when somebody comes to your house, if they don't feel good with how the outside of your house looks, they may don't want to come inside. So, we start on the outside with the objective of really trying to, to show those who pass by, those who have family members who are buried over there, that there is a renaissance acoming. There is a rebirth that we hope to be a part of. And when I say we, it is not just Len and me. We cannot do it by ourselves. We don't want to do it by ourselves. We clearly solicit any reactions, thoughts. Len James, why do you do this? Or what's happening over there? Please feel free to ask us suggestions we want, suggestions we need, because we do want to be a meaningful part of this community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Questions?
I would just like to say thank you. I'm quite sure there were other areas that you could have chosen to do this exact thing, but thank you for choosing Oxford to do it in. Thank you.
We appreciate that comment, and, um, we are genuinely glad to be here. In, in whatever last thirty seconds I have, I don't know if my partner would want to say anything. If so, if you could just stand up, Len, so that when you see him moving into his home and going up and down the street, you'll know who he is. And, uh, but those comments are appreciated. This opportunity is appreciated. Are there any other questions that?
I do. Generally speaking, when somebody has a property owner, has an interest in being annexed to the city, there's a process in applying for annexation, and does that usually go first to Cheryl or directly to you, Ms. Bowen?
Cheryl.
Cheryl. So, you might want to have a conversation with our Planning Director Cheryl Hart, who is right in front.
Oh, right, oh, right.
Have, have you already, have you already connected by any chance? Have you already connected with Ms. Hart then?
Right, we've had the pleasure of meeting her and, um, becoming, right. It's just becoming acquainted. We met her when we were coming in here, and we are hoping to be able to interact with her. That's why I was looking over, who are you talking about?
Right. She is the, she is the one, and, I mean, she also knew, happened to know a lot about the history of the cemetery. Have you found Henry Cheatham's grave?
Yes, we have, we have, we have. And it's, uh, uh, along with family members and others in the area, and a lot of significant history as relates to veterans who are buried over there. Uh, I mean, there's just so much that we want the larger community to know about it. And hopefully in time, especially with Harrisburg, uh, to be able to make this a site that people will want to visit, to walk through, um, to just connect with how things used to be and who used to be, so, um.
I thought, well, thank you.
And thank you. And that last point again, that I'm going to reiterate, in terms of any funding considerations, uh, and the question that was asked a moment ago, uh, we understand, uh, that this body might, might continue to provide in the future as relates to the upkeep and maintenance of that area. We can assure you that money will be well-spent, well-used, and will be good for this area, so, thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And with that, we invite Larry Thomas to come forward and to speak about Lake Devon, the wastewater treatment plant and the waste stuff. And as you know, please, went to the podium.
Larry Thomas, two oh seven East Front Street in Oxford, two seven five six five. Item five A on the agenda, hopefully, uh, a mountain bike trail will be included when the trail planned and is constructed and all this stuff. I understand this is a first step, but I'm proud that you're taking the first step, and I hope you will consider a mountain bike trail out there. Number two, on the rehab item, item I on the agenda. It's my understanding that this item is just a preventative maintenance, replacing equipment approaching the end of its useful life. I hope that is correct. I hope you're not adding any more capacity. Because on a dry day, you're only operating at one quarter to one-third capacity of its rated.
We are not adding capacity.
Uh, then, my next question is, how does this roughly five point two million dollar expenditure, along with the roughly one point six expenditure on items J and K, a couple of six million dollars for the Car Lake Regional Water System from last month, affect the water and sewer rates in the coming year? It is my understanding from a meeting of the combined Financial Committee and Public Works Committee that, um, there's been two recommended rate increases by your rate consultant that were not enacted, so. Uh, I hope we don't have to take a big hit on the water and sewer rates in the coming year, but it's not looking real good from what I'm seeing. The pay plan, while I'm glad to see a certain sector of the Oxford City Government employees singled out for an early pay increase, I would urge the board to enact a pay plan to the remaining groups of city employees whom I'm sure are feeling underappreciated prior to the twenty-three, twenty-four budget. Thank you for your time, and have a good evening.
Thank you very much for taking the time to come to our meeting and voice your comments. They are always on point. Thank you so much. Okay. Uh, we do not have, item four is public hearings, and we have none scheduled for tonight, so we move forward to city business to item five A, which was just mentioned by Mr. Thomas, to consider approving a bed, budget amendment for two point eight mile Lake Devon survey. The department would like to move forward with the survey for the remaining two point eight miles of Lake Devon perimeter. The survey will enable the city to determine the amount of easement that will be necessary to obtain in order to complete the four-mile trail that circumvents Lake Devon. The dense growth of bushes and trees around the lake makes surveying more difficult in the warmer months. If the project is not approved now, it will be delayed until winter of twenty twenty-three. The funds will come from general fund lapse salaries, and we have support information in attachment five A. The recommended action is that staff recommend approving the budget amendment of sixteen thousand six hundred dollars from lapse salaries into the contract labor services. Uh, line item zero one zero dash sixty-one twenty dash nineteen fifty-two. What is the pleasure of the board?
Motion.
Oh, that was a motion, I think, for almost all the way down the line there, uh, okay? Any discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion? Signal so with a resounding aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Like sign? Thank you so much. Item Z, consider approving an agreement with Diligent Community to begin the agenda and minute process electronically for seven thousand five hundred dollars initially, and then with a five percent increase per year. Uh, Cindy Bowen, as the clerk, has reviewed the software offered by Granicus and Diligent, which will allow all agendas and minutes to be electronically. While all the software does the same thing, meaning from both companies, that prices are competitive, Diligent Community software is the newest and most user-friendly, uh, governance and civic engagement solution for public organizations. Diligent will provide software that will ensure the citizens of Oxford are informed, engaged, and have easy access to community resources. As the city of Oxford continues to rely on manual processes, we use more time and resources leading to governance gaps for meeting efficiency and failure to address critical community needs for transparency, inclusion, and engagement. And you have support information in attachment B, five B. The following items would be subscribed to: Agenda creation, flexible workflow for agenda item submission, a document center, public site, and publish to public stakeholders, public subscription to agenda notices, full agenda packet downloads and printing capabilities, member annotations, SMS and email notifications, that's text and email, uh, fully searchable, ADA compliant. The recommended action is that the board approve the agreement with Diligent for electronic agendas and minutes. What is the pleasure of the board?
Motion.
That was a motion by Commissioner Khan. Any discussion on the motion?
I have one question.
Yes, sir.
Um, so, so this, this system will be accessible by, you know, us and also citizens, correct? Okay, so they can go on there and, and download, see the minutes and everything on there?
Yeah, there's a front half and a back half. Um, the front half is what the, the citizens will see, it's the finished product. The back half is for the staff reports, the, the department heads to put their information in, and it's going to cut back a lot of time. But, yes, they will be able to see the same things that you do.
Okay, yeah, good.
And just to clarify, they certainly, yes, sir, I'll be right, they, everybody does have access to minutes and agendas when they're posted on the website now.
Right.
This will just streamline that process.
This will just be a little bit more user-friendly, I would think.
Yeah, and this is just going to automatically put it on there, where we have to go and take recording, put it on there now, but this is going to automatically do it.
Okay, yes, Commissioner Khan.
No, no, I was just saying this is, this, this, this is, this is.
Oh, I said Khan, and I was looking at Commissioner Bridges. I'm so sorry.
Right here.
Go ahead and please forgive me, Commissioner Bridges. Yes, sir.
Bridges.
No, I didn't mean to cut, Commissioner Khan.
No, no, that was it. I was just, I was just showing, we have all this paper, that's it.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, sir, Commissioner Bridges.
I remember, um, being early on the board, I went to a, uh, commissioner's conference, and I met this group of commissioners from another municipality, and he was telling me, all of the commissioners have laptops. And my question is, with this new system, wouldn't it be uh, helpful? If, because he said that they've been using computer laptops i- in, in all of their documents and everything are downloaded to the computers, and they walk into the meetings and they have everything on screen. And I just wondered.
I'm actually looking and pricing iPads for everybody.
Okay. All right. That's the, that's my question.
Okay, excellent. Any questions down this way? I, I had one, and that is looking in the attachment. It's your, the price in the narrative here is seventy-five hundred dollars with a five percent increase. And in the attachment, it shows on the, um, fourth page of the attachment, actually, it says page three of nine. I take it back. I didn't realize there were page numbers down below. Um, at, at the, it shows seven thousand sixty-eight dollars as, as. Oh, I am.
Yeah, I did put both.
I did not realize we had both. I apologize.
I put both, um, quotes in there. So, you could see, there's not a lot of difference.
Okay.
But, but they did do pretty much the same thing.
Okay. And then, the only thing that I would ask that we consider is, because five percent increase a year is going to be, by year six, it's going to be ten thousand dollars a year. Uh, so, it does kind of go up at, at a pace.
They all do. They all do.
But, um, that, that we keep looking at it as time goes by.
Yeah, originally, they wanted eight percent each year. And, uh, our wonderful city manager down there told me, said, go back and ask them if we can get five. So, I did.
Okay.
And they said yes.
Commissioner Givney.
Yes, ma'am.
The decision to get iPads versus computers, how do we, how do we come about which one that, that will benefit us the most?
iPads are lighter weight for you guys to carry, um.
But as far as.
You go to, to, you know.
Having everything in one spot.
Mm-hmm.
Will it have the capacity to do everything we need it to do?
It should.
It will. I've seen it, you know, the cities using it, using the pads. It does make it easier to carry too.
I travel almost exclusively with my iPad Pro now as opposed to my laptop.
So, just for maybe a week or a month, if you could just give us an estimate, idea of how much this would save the city in buying paper.
Yeah.
They spend, really, we use a lot of paper. We use a lot of paper.
Time and delivery of some of these reports.
Yeah, and what, what savings?
I mean, I remember, yeah, when, when the police officers were doing it, I, I was new on the board, and I'm like, okay. I didn't know why they were coming initially.
Yeah, yeah. Just, just an idea of how much a saving.
I did. Yeah, yes.
I'll try to cut that out very quickly. I'll try to cut that out very quickly. I do have to allow them occasionally, but, um...
Okay, excellent. So we have a motion. Any further questions? All in favor of the motion? Signal so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed like sign? That motion carries unanimously. Okay, thank you. Moving forward, item C, consider a contiguous annexation request on behalf of Susan Param Horton, John Horton Jr., and Kenneth Param for property containing one-point-four-two-plus-or-minus acres located off Lewis Street. The annexation process was initiated at the July board meeting and also went through the process of having the property rezoned from industrial park, ICB, to highway business, HB, for the proposed urgent care facility. Currently, the one-point-four-two-plus-or-minus acres are separated from the city limits by the street and meet the continuous annexation requirement. The clerk certified the sufficiency of the request in Au- August, and the public hearing was held, but the final step of approving annexation wasn't completed. See your support information in attachment five C. Recommended action is to annex the one-point-four-two-acre tract of land. What is the pleasure of the board?
Motion.
Motion, multiple motions, I think, Commissioners Tovey and Bridges. Any discussion on the motion?
Yeah, I would like to.
Yes, sir.
Just say this. Um, um, part of the reason I'm delighted to hear about another urgent care facility is my experience at the emergency room with my granddaughter. We were there three hours while she was burning with fever and having all kinds of problems. And, and it is amazing to me, um, this, you know, what individuals have to do when things crop up relative to medical issues. And so, the next time I went to urgent care in Budner, Creedmoor, 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 and it was half, it was thirty minutes, and they were seeing my granddaughter. And so, I, I think as many urgent cares as we can get around here, especially, you know, us being in a more rural area, you know, the better. Um, and, and I don't think anybody has forgotten the pandemic we just recently got out of. And so, you know, I'm, I'm just glad to see this happen.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Any other comments? All in favor of the motion? Signal so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed like sign? That motion carries unanimously. Thank you. On to item D, which is to consider calling for a public hearing to be held at the April board meeting for a request by SS Long Holdings LLC to rezone three-twenty-two Lewis Street from light industrial, LI, to highway business, HB. The requested rezoning would be consistent with the current comprehensive land use plan and the proposed comprehensive land use plan. The property was rezoned from highway business to general industrial at the June twelfth, twenty-eighteen meeting. The new owner would like to revert back to the previous zoning classification. Acceptable uses for this area would include arts, entertainment, food services, educational services, retail, et cetera. You have support information in attachment five D. The recommended action is to call for a public hearing on April eleventh, twenty-twenty-three. What is the pleasure of the board?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioners Tovey. Any discussion there, too? All in favor of the motion? Signal so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed like sign? That motion carries unanimously. Item E, consider allowing the city of Oxford to sponsor the Nextdoor radio stage using downtown development funds in the amount of two thousand, five hundred dollars. Downtown business owner Trace Nine has requested the city of Oxford to become a sponsor of the Nextdoor radio stage in order to purchase extensions to transform the current eight-and-a-half-by-eighteen-foot mobile stage into a fourteen-by-eighteen-foot drop-down stage. This would allow the city of Oxford to host larger bands for various events throughout the year. In exchange, the city of Oxford would be allowed to use the stage with sound and setup absolutely free and would have its logo permanently placed on the stage. You have support information in attachment five E. The recommendation is to allow the sponsorship of the Nextdoor radio stage using downtown development funds in the amount of twenty-five hundred dollars. What is the pleasure of the board?
Motion.
That was a motion by Commissioners Khan and Lumpkin's Concomitantly. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion? Signal so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed like sign? That motion carries. Item F, consider accepting the downtown Oxford Economic Development Proposal for a joint rebranding initiative for the upcoming fiscal year twenty-twenty-three, twenty-four. DOE DC is proposing a joint rebranding initiative with the city of Oxford with the objective of creating cohesive brands showcasing the special, unique niche of Oxford. Understanding the city of Oxford would have a citywide brand and DOE DCs would be tailored to the municipal service districts, there are several intermediary objectives needing to happen to achieve this. You have support information in attachment five S. F, one, a designated committee with the city, DOE DC, and community stakeholders; two, joint funding agreements; three, creation of a request for proposals for local and outside distribution; four, selection of a marketing consulting firm. Recommended action is to accept the DOE DC proposal letter to begin the joint rebranding initiative. What is the pleasure of the board?
Motion.
Motion. That sounded like Commissioners Khan, Gilreth, and Tovey. Uh, any discussion? All in favor of the motion? Signal so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed like sign? That motion carries unanimously. Item G, consider the adoption of the special events permit policy and application. The city of Oxford's Special Events Committee has developed an updated version of the street closure policy, renamed the Special Events Permit Policy, abbreviated SEP, and application. And the city of Oxford continues to grow and requests for city events continue to increase. The Special Events Committee comprised of downtown development, engineering, fire, parks and recreation, police, and public works departments has developed an enhanced version of the current street closure policy. The SEP allows for a more comprehensive, in-depth view of the requested events, materials needed, timelines, and fees, and allows for more open communication with event representatives for questions and concerns. The Special Events Committee is optimistic the new policy will streamline event requests and allow for a clearer understanding for both the public and the city on event procedures going forward, and you have that policy in attachment five G. Recommended action is to adopt the Special Events Permit Policy and application. What is the pleasure of the board?
Motion.
Okay, and looks like that was Commissioners Bridges and Toby Khan. Okay? Uh, is there any discussion on the motion? So I did have two questions. Am I correct in understanding that the application process, is that a new thing? Was that not in place before?
So, no, there was an application.
Melissa, you might want to stand up.
Oh, sorry.
It's easier to hear.
So there was an application process in place, but it was only just one page. Didn't really go into the event as much. Kind of looked at the date, what it was. They didn't talk about what they would need, if they needed trash receptacles, if they needed extra equipment, if they would need to request security of, like, in terms of type tents, what type of tents were used and was it required or required to inspect. So the new application kind, it gives an in-depth view, allowing us to see what exactly the event, the, and what we can do.
Right, and, and am I correct that with the former approach, was there a fee? Because I'm understanding now there is a hundred-and-fifty-dollar fee approached with any, you know, that is attached to any request to close a street?
There was not a fee with the former one. Uh, the reason we're at, we have fee now is because it's also, it's including more time, so there's an increase of events. I already have replied with two more on the way, just for the first half of this year. That's not including everything else that comes, Christmas, fall gets busier. Um, with the intending or the opinion growth, we're expecting that number to go higher. And, you know, when you need materials with, like, barricades, we need to be able to see what we're spending on using the barricades. We need to be able to make sure that there's an event on this side of the city, but there's an event at the same time on this side of the city. We have enough stuff, enough materials in, in-house to be able to support and increase the safety of each event. So that's the reason we're introducing these.
Okay, and, and that certainly makes a difference with requests if they're kind of frivolous, for lack of a better word, and I, I don't mean that, but just, you know, oh, hey, let's see if they'll close the streets for us. It does kind of put a stopgap in there. That said, I, I saw that, and oftentimes, there are requests for street closures on state-owned streets, and, and this new policy now says that the person making the request can no longer make that through the city, they have to go to the state.
So they would have, they would have to get DOT's approval first, then they would come to us. I've already had conversations with John Sandberg, also with the Bramble representative as well. They are going to give us the form that they require. Uh, it will be online for people to find as well as the contact information for the person who did the study.
So how long could a request or expect it to take to hear back from the state with respect to a closure request?
I don't have a number right off the end, like, right off the top of my mind for you. Um, and these conversations happened a couple months ago, so they said they would be prompt, but I mean, I can't give you an exact number, but that is something that I can get for you.
I, I just wonder, because I think that's gonna be a surprise.
Right.
For, for people, because there's, this is a, a big change for what people are used to. Would it be possible to include, yeah, I, obviously, you have it in the policy that there's contact information and this is what you need to do, but if they need to get that done before they even come to the city, and they need to come to the city sixty days in advance, correct?
Yes.
Right, so that's.
Well, they're sixty days before the event.
Right, sixty days before the event.
Right.
Which means, if there could be something in the policy that says you should expect a turnaround, it should take X amount of times, you know, maybe four weeks, I, I don't know, like, ten business days, something that gives a head up to the, heads up to the applicant.
I sus-, we kind of suspect it will be kind of similar to the ABC permit, which, if you've kind of done that before, it takes them a while to get it back to you.
Right.
So, kind of working on a case-by-case basis, if they can show that they've had communication with the ABC commission or with NSDOT that, hey, we have requested this, um, we can still look at it. But I, yes, I can have that.
And so that's the normal policy with other jurisdictions that, on state-owned streets and the applicant needs to go, so this isn't anything new for NCD.
It's standard practice in other, other communities and their, and their events, but deals with state rightfully.
Okay.
I used, um, the cities of South City, Carolina Beach, New Orville, and Raleigh, and each and every one have similar language and their policies.
Excellent, thank you. Those are my questions. I appreciate you taking the time to answer them. Thank you. Anything else? Okay, all in favor of the policy and application? Signal so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed like sign? That carries unanimously. Item H, receive an update on the comprehensive plan and call for a public hearing for the April eleventh regular board meeting for adoption. The consultant Stewart Incorporated made a presentation at the planning board meeting and will be providing an update to the comp plan at the March twenty-seventh planning board meeting based on the comments received. The process of updating the comp plan started in May of last year. The process included stakeholder interviews in June, public workshops in July, community surveys July through October, and an open house in December. The vision statement is that the city of Oxford is a vibrant community of engaged citizens, thriving businesses, and beautiful public spaces where established residents, newcomers, and visitors belong. And you have support information in attachment five H. And I know that we, and staff recommends calling for a public hearing on April eleventh, twenty-twenty-three. We also have Ben Cotton here from Stewart Incorporated. Ben, were you, were you just here to watch and see if we were gonna schedule it, or were you intending to make the presentation?
Uh, as the board desires. I do have some slides for a presentation, if, if you would like to give you an update.
So colleagues, would you like to hear an update?
I have questions.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, excellent. So let's, why don't we finish, because we have a recommendation, let's go ahead and, and finish for the public hearing, or do we want to have the presentation first?
Doesn't matter.
Either way.
Okay, well, then, the staff recommends calling for a public hearing on April eleventh, twenty-twenty-three. Is there an option?
Motion.
Motion by Mayor Pro-Tam. Any discussion on the motion?
Uh, question.
Yes?
So I know that the planning board did not, um, provide their recommendation yet to this board, uh, for the plan, which I imagine that's coming back up before the next, or into the month.
At the twenty-seventh, their March twenty-seventh meeting.
Yeah, the March twenty-seventh meeting. Um, would we be anticipating any delays, further delays from that process? And if, and if so, would it, would that impact the scheduling of this?
I do not anticipate any scheduling, um, conflict to get the consultant, yes, done, but planning board has asked for. I sent that information to them on yesterday, and we will be providing them another update again at our next planning board meeting. So I sent that information so they can go there prior to the twenty-seventh meeting. So we'll be keeping it just like.
That answers my question. Thank you.
Can I just ask a question?
Please.
From, from Cheryl. I know, I was at that planning board meeting, and I believe there was a, a request made, was it the southeast corner, to change that from industrial to residential?
Right.
And this is the latest one?
Yes, and we've done it and we've created a presentation.
Yeah, alright, that's, that's what I, I, it's not quite clear. My eyesight's not that good. Well, thanks.
I think, well, we'll, we'll find out. I, because I think this was printed up, this was printed up last week by Ms. Bowen, and Ms. Hart sent out the updated map after, I think, this, this week, that's right. So, so the, but we'll see the updated map in, in this. Okay, so, all those, is there, has there been a motion?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, Mayor Pro-Tam made the motion. Any other discussion on the motion to call for a public hearing in April? All, yes, ma'am?
Question. Did you say that an updated document is being provided to us?
I said the updated document is provided to the planning board.
Oh, planning board.
And we will see it in your presentation.
Alright, so you're saying it's in this, in this packet or someplace else?
I'm saying that it will be shared with me.
Oh.
Okay, all in favor of calling for a public hearing on April eleventh?
Aye.
Signal so by saying aye. Any opposed like sign? That motion carries unanimously. Okay, take away this with Ben Cotton from Stewart Incorporated. We are happy to have you here today. Come on.
Mayor, Commissioners, thank you so much for having me. It's working. I'm going to be, uh, as quick as I can, as quick as I can be, uh, but I just want to thank everybody for having me, uh, this evening to give you an update on the comprehensive plan. We are nearing the end of this process. I will do a quick project recap, um, talk about the schedule and process, visions, goals, uh, and recommendations, and then the future related use map. So the project recap, uh, we looked at all of the previous planning efforts that have been, been done for the city of Oxford. There's lots of good ones out there. We wanted to incorporate into, incorporate them into this plan. Did a community profile, basically a snapshot of where things are currently. Uh, community outreach activities, including stakeholder interviews, public workshop, community survey, uh, and a public open house in December. Uh, with this information, help us put together vision and goals with the steering committee, uh, as well as put together a future land use map and a series of recommendations. This is where we are in the process, basically, uh, giving the various bodies updates prior to, um, adoption hearings. Some of the general trends that, that we have talked about and addressed in the plan. Population is aging and becoming more diverse. There is a solid employment and professional base. Uh, median household income is increasing, but so is the cost of housing. Uh, we have noticed recent development interest, but also some uncertainty there as well. Uh, we have noticed recent development interest, but also some uncertainty there as well. Uh, really strong sense of community in Oxford, but concerns about safety, property maintenance, and civic engagement. And then also just the, the, the fact that people want to be able to walk around town safely and comfortably. So we did, uh, work with the steering committee to, uh, come up with the vision, which is the town of Oxford is a vibrant community of engaged citizens, thriving businesses, and beautiful public spaces, where established residents, newcomers, and visitors all belong. Then we were able to come up with, uh, a series of recommendations that followed seven goals that we established. Um, and they are a little bit more wordy in the document, but just to give you an idea, uh, the recommendations fall into seven categories. Sort of the general category, which is focusing on civic pride, community engagement, public safety. Um, and then a downtown category, to invigorate downtown. Uh, an economic development category, a category that focuses on parks, natural areas, recreation, and trails. A cultural resources category, historic assets and cultural institutions. A public infrastructure category, and a category on housing. And then often, the meat of the, of a, of a, of a conference plan is the, the future land use map. And I realize this is tough to see, but each of the colors of, of the future land use map will cor- correspond to character areas. Those, uh, are obviously difficult to tip, to see, but they will be, uh, legible and, um, uh, clearly defined, uh, in the, in the comprehensive plan. The idea, uh, just to reiterate, is that the future land use map of the comprehensive plan is not a wall or an ordinance like a zoning map or zoning ordinance is. So the future land use map is a guide for the city, something that they, the city should use, uh, to help with legislative decisions such as rezonings, and also to help with other things, like investments and infrastructure, um, or, you know, to make development decisions in general. But it is just a guide, uh, and that's the nature of the, of the long-range future land use map. So just a few things in detail, uh, what we do when we're working on a future land use map? So we look at the existing land use, we look at the suitability based on environmental considerations and existing neighborhoods, existing, existing activities. Uh, we do look at the, at the zoning map, and we also work with the city to, to understand where there has been interest in developments. Uh, and I've had, and what we, what we like to do is look at areas where the, that, uh, we anticipate are, are, uh, likely to change, um, based on interest, based on location, so on and so forth. So those are the areas that we, that we like to, that I'm trying to call out here with these, with these red circles. Just to say, these are areas where there, we sense that there might be some opportunities or potential for change, and it would be an opportunity for the city to, uh, to, uh, sort of jump ahead of that change and help to steer the, the development process. So, uh, in more detail, just to give you, uh, an example of how this process has, has worked. The big circle that's sort of in the middle toward the bottom, uh, that started out, uh, or that, uh, currently is zoned, um, largely industrial and agricultural, industrial sort of to the north of eighty-five, uh, agricultural to the south. Uh, is what we have done, uh, based on some of the development interest and, and, and goings-on, is looked at the top part, along industry drive of that circle, uh, and, uh, adjusted that to mixed-use corridor, um, to allow for a more, uh, for larger variety of uses. It remains industrial south of that, that, that mixed-use corridor is a lighter colored pink there, along industry drive. South of that, and the purple color is industrial, that's basically about the same as what the zoning map, current zoning is, as well as some of the existing uses. And originally, we had brought that industrial all the way down, uh, to the, to the bottom of that circle. Uh, we heard from the planning board that they would prefer that, uh, that portion south of eighty-five, uh, be suitable for medium-density residential. And that's the type of iterative process of putting together a futures, future land use map, uh, that, that happens. So we do expect to make revisions in the future land use map. We have, over the course of the last four months or so, with the steering committee, with the public, uh, at the public workshop, and then also now with the planning board. Um, and so that is, uh, this is where we are, this is the current, latest iteration. North of downtown, these are some other areas that we recognize, uh, as, uh, possible catalyst for change. And those are the ar- the areas, again, in the, in the, in the red circles are, are where you'll notice, uh, some potential changes based on existing zoning. So the next step, we're still in draft mode, uh, we're taking feedback, um, and revisions, uh, have asked the planning board to do so. I think most of what we gathered was, uh, at the planning board meeting last month, or earlier this month. Um, did ask, uh, for submissions of, of comments and feedback, um, and I think we've only received one from the planning board thus far.
Excellent. That's, that's it for, for your part?
That's it for them.
Thank you.
Open it up to my colleagues to see if they have any questions. Thank you very much, that was great and easy to follow. Questions or comments from members of the board?
Probably hold mine till the eleventh, I just, yeah, but.
Okay, and then I'm gonna just add, could you go back to the land use map? Yes, so, two questions, one of them is, is it possible to put a small legend on that page? That also, I know you've got the descriptions of the character areas in the following section, but it might be helpful for anybody who's looking at the map. Is it possible to do a little?
Certainly, yes.
Legend, so that it just, you have it there? Because they're separated by pages, so a person could look and see exactly what each color is.
Okay, yes.
And the other question, and I am, somebody else that was at the planning board meeting, uh, two weeks ago, brought this up, and I hadn't noticed it. Going down Highway fifteen, which is also Lewis Street, uh, we have a new development coming in that is Hatcher Creek. And I'm not sure where Hatcher Creek falls on the, but that, they've broken ground on that, which is a, a pudd. Um, and Ms. Hart, maybe you can tell, and I just wasn't sure if that fell in the yellow area or the purple area? In, in which ca- would there, would there be any interest in continuing that pink, um, line of mixed use down till it gets to the yellow? And I, just, that was, Ms. Hart, do you happen to know where Hatcher Creek falls?
I do not, yeah.
So that, we don't need a response, but-
So now I would imagine is in the purple.
But, the-
Cause actually it's on the purple and some of the yellow.
Mm-hmm, so-
We'll look into that, I think it makes sense, uh, particularly if they've broken ground.
So that you might, to maybe pull the pink down, and that way, yes, Ms. Gil, Commissioner?
Well, I've had similar issues in understanding the circles there, but I don't see them on, on the, on the draft here. And the circles are representing future?
The circles are just for the represent, just for purposes of presentation to you, to show you how we come about addressing and, and why. And some of those areas that are highlighted are where you're gonna see some of the incorporation of new ideas, i.e. the mixed-use corridor. And that's a, that's kind of a new concept, and so I wanted to call that out, as something where we recognize that those, that's where those-
So it won't make it into this document?
They will not be in the, in the actual future land use map.
Okay.
Excellent, further questions? Further questions? You came a long way to present to us tonight, we appreciate your time and thought and the work that's gone into this process.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you very much, we appreciate that, and thank you, Ms. Hart, as well. Okay. Oh, yes, sir.
So, I noticed we have a lot of people here from, uh, Cramble Little, Cramble Little Theater, can we, can we move item M up? So they don't have to wait around?
Colleagues? Do you, do you object?
No.
Okay, excellent. Perfect, thank you very much, Mr. Cotton. Yes, ma'am.
We're having this public hearing on April eleventh, will that map be available to the public's prior? So they get an opportunity to look it, get a way to hearing?
I think.
Where, where will it be posted?
Website?
Could we, could we do a blow-up and put it on the nasal, so that it would be available as well as, um, send it out on the sun sign list, the PDF?
Yeah.
That work?
Yeah, that's great.
Excellent, thank you very much for bringing that up. Okay, item N. Consider waiving the cost of the auditorium rental for Granville Little Theater's first pro- production post-COVID to help them get money banked. Commissioner Toby asked that this item be placed on the agenda, and you have a staff report in Agenda Item Five M. The recommended action is to allow GLT to put on their first show without paying the rental of the auditorium. And Commissioner Toby, would you like to speak to this, or invite somebody else to speak to this?
No, I'll, I'll speak to it, um, the idea behind it was, the Granville Little Theater have been in Oxford for many, many years, this is their home base. COVID hit us very hard, the same as it did a lot of other people. And, um, when it came to putting on a production, I mean, our coffers were low because we were spending money on storage units, et cetera, et cetera, and we couldn't replenish that. So I just thought it'd be nice of the city if they could just waive that fee for the first production to allow the Granville Little Theater to get a heads up and things. I don't think people realize the cost of putting on a production, like buying the rights to put on a play or paying for scripts, et cetera. So, uh, that's why I brought it forward, and we've got some Granville Little Theater members here.
Those are of the Granville Little Theater, do you wanna stand up? Okay, Bravo, thank you for coming, we appreciate it, and we appreciate your patience, uh, while we've been working our way through the agenda, yes, Commissioner?
Way to the crowd.
Motion.
Yes, Commissioner?
Motion.
Well, one question?
Yes.
Well, the fee that we're waiving is, is the exact amount is... So, Commissioner Toby, do you have an answer to that?
I don't have an answer for that, because the, the fee depends on the number of days you use it for rehearsal and things like that. So we, we could probably work out a number for you later.
Well, well, no, well, then my question really is, so what, what, what did we finally decide on, on the, the cost if, if we were to charge? I mean, I'm, I'm just curious, so I can ch- I mean, have an idea of what we're really talking about. Is it a hundred and, what?
Wonder like fifty for two hours?
So what do we-
It was a-
We broke it down.
It was a hundred and fifty dollars for two hours.
For performance.
For four hours.
The four hours, the four hours, sorry, the four hours.
For four hours, exactly.
And the discussion about the yoga was just, would we allow it to be rented for two hours instead of a minimum of four, without changing the fee?
Yeah, yeah.
Right. Right. So-
But I think generally, with, um... I'm trying to think if there was a different theme, uh, for rehearsal nights versus performance nights historically.
Uh, I don't think so, it was the same.
So, I think the, the question would also be in relationship to, to your question, Commissioner Gilreath, is, um, performances, and then how many rehearsal nights? And, you know, would there be an opportunity for, uh, Granville Little Theater to do some rehearsals elsewhere?
Right. Okay.
Where there is, but you need to be on the stage, you need to have the set put up, you know, you need to be on the stage to rehearse properly. You can do so much elsewhere, but, um, it has to be done on the stage.
So you've not yet quantified?
I haven't quantified, we, we, I never thought about it, because I don't think there is a, a tariff sheet of how much. I don't think it was ever approved, was it?
Well, in, in the past then, how much would the, would you guys' budget be for the rental and use and your rehearsals and all of that in the past? What would it look like? I, I mean, I have no clue.
Aye.
So, I, I'm the current chair for Granville Little Theater, and as I'm new, as being in the theater, uh, the last performance I did was in two thousand and... Yeah, um, before I graduated high school. Um, and, um, before, I can, I cannot give you that information at this moment, because I was, you know, I was a child at that point. But I do know that, just to give you a, an example of where we're at financially with this, uh, certain production we're doing, we have a budget of fifteen hundred dollars, we are already at eleven. So, it's, it's not a, it's not that we want to just get the money to make it happen, we're, we're a nonprofit organization, first off. And currently, right now, we just wanna get back on our feet, because we do want to continue bringing this to the community. Because I'm not sure if any of you all follow social media or just general speaking around town. A lot of people are trying to want Granville Little Theater back in this community and to perform. I'm also a chairman for Tribeca Woods, and we've done productions there and, and radio shows. And, I'm just, I don't think a lot of people wanna come to that, just looking at our numbers from those shows. We, you know, each night we've had between twenty or thirty people. But when you have a show at the theater, you're looking at, what is it, three hundred and twenty seats, I believe, there in that auditorium? So, you know, in that sense, for us to continue to, for us to bring back this theater to the community and continue to keep it going, I believe this first show, y'all waiting to speak for us, will just get us back on point, and we'll be fine after that. But we just, we just really just asking for a little help right now.
I thought it'd be just a nice gesture to help, it doesn't cost the city anything out of pocket, apart from electricity or something.
Can I also make one more point? I was, um, given the opportunity to go and tour the facilities. They are, have not been kept up with. Um, outside of that, then you'll be having fun, you know, the, like our lights, or this, because that system is about, it's really old. It does not work, um, you know, and we're, we're so hungry to do this that we're willing to, we've had a lot of people, we've actually had a light system donated to us so that we can make this happen from a member of the community. And, you know, it's, if we can get these things going, it, it'll be a good partnership between us and the city to help hopefully revitalize that space, because it should be being used.
Okay, and I just realized, because normally what we would've done is have you come to speak at the podium.
I'm sorry.
So for the record, will you just please state your name and your address?
My name is Quentin Sidney, and I am on one oh eight Fourth Avenue, Austin, Carolina.
Okay, great, thank you, so, Commissioner Princhester, you're calling the-
Yeah, I just, I made a motion.
Okay, so we have a motion, is there any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, signal so by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? That motion carries unanimously, but I think I would sense that there would be an interest in having some specifics from Granville Little Theater with respect to the, uh, need for rehearsal time, as well as show dates and so on, to quantify that. Yes?
Cindy, another COB, one hundred pound pound drive off. I can't say exactly how much I, cause I don't know, I didn't handle any of the finances. I do know that we're looking at least one or two rehearsals a week, um, and then they'll probably need, at what, at least three or four days to build set? And then you're talking about tech week, which is usually just about every night that week.
Can I make a suggestion?
Yes.
Send, send an email to the clerk and she'll, then you can have time to think through it and, and work out what you think is, is reasonable for your needs and reasonable for the gift of the auditorium, and send it to the clerk, who will make sure that all the board gets it.
I already sent a note to city manager with the times and dates that it would be required, and it's not all- I already sent a note to city manager with the times and dates that it would be required and it's not all day or all night, it's a couple of hours of an evening, so.
Okay, excellent, thank you very much. Yes, Mr. Blasko?
I don't have the course, but I could work it out.
Twenty-two days for, for rehearsal and six nights, six days for shows. Okay, thank you very much. With that, Cramble Little Theater folks, you, did we get our votes?
Yeah.
We did.
We've had the conversation just gone around and around, okay, so you're good to go, thank you very much, and we will, you got it.
Mm-hmm.
Excellent.
You bet, and good luck, and we look forward to hearing about it. Go back, yes?
I'd like to make a suggestion, the next three items are from the uh, city engineer. And then we have the roundabout, which is from the city engineer. So I was, in, in addition to that, because of the, the amount of information, I'd like to ask uh, Amy to come up to the, to the microphone for those four items, but if you do the roundabout while she's up there, then we get that out of the way.
Okay, that's great, so we will, we are on item H, I believe.
Okay.
Okay.
No, did we do that?
Yeah.
Okay, oh yeah, we did, I'm sorry, I was giving my ch- okay. Item I, consider adopting a resolution for tentative award of bid and revise capital project ordinance of the wastewater treatment plant rehabilitation improvements project. The city accepted and opened seven bids on February seventeenth, which ranged from nine million nineteen thousand one hundred and seventy-five dollars and sixty cents to twelve million five hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars. The total project cost for engineering design, construction administration, and closing costs of one hundred and fifty-one thousand five hundred and fifty dollars and construction total, ten million eight hundred and sixty thousand nine hundred and eighty-four dollars and forty cents. The city was awarded a six million and sixty-two thousand dollar loan with a five hundred thousand dollar principal forgiveness by the Division of Water Infrastructure for the wastewater treatment plant rehabilitation and improvements project. The cost of the DWI funded amount is four million two hundred and ninety-eight thousand nine hundred and eighty-four dollars. The capital project ordinance needs to be revised to match the final anticipated cost. And you have support information in attachment five I. The recommended action by staff and our consultant, CDM Smith, is that the board adopt a resolution for tentative award to the low bidder, Carolina Civil Works Inc. of Durham, North Carolina, and with a project of a five percent contingency of four hundred and fifty thousand nine hundred and fifty-eight dollars and seventy-eight cents for a total construction cost of nine million four hundred and seventy thousand one hundred and thirty-four dollars and thirty-eight cents. Staff recommends that the board use water fund balance in the amount of four million two hundred and ninety-eight thousand nine hundred and eighty-four dollars to cover the balance of the project, not covered by the DWI low interest loan, and do a budget amendment to use these funds. Staff also recommends the board adopt the revised capital project ordinance for the wastewater treatment plant rehabilitation project. It is recommended that the money stay in the current funds until such time as they are needed in twelve to eighteen months and this will be addressed in the fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty-four budget. What is the pleasure of the board?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Khan, any discussion there too? All in favor of the motion, signal so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? That motion carries unanimously. Item J. Consider adopting the revised capital project ordinance and the budget amendment for the twenty eighteen sewer line improvements project. The board previously accepted the loan offer from the Division of Water Infrastructure and passed tentative relus- resolutions to award the twenty eighteen sewer project contingent on additional funding from DWI. Staff in the Public Works and Finance Committee has determined that the city should use fund balance instead of increasing the loan. Contractor HD Reynolds is holding their equipment and labor costs and only requesting increased material costs for items that increase ten percent or more. The cost will be an additional one million three hundred and fifty-seven thousand for construction plus a contingency of five percent of sixty-seven thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars to cover increased material costs for a total budget amendment of one million four hundred and twenty-four thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars. The city needs to pass a revised capital project ordinance and do an amendment to the budget. You have support information in attachment five J. Recommended action, staff in the Public Works and Finance Committee has recommend adopting the revised capital project ordinance and the budget amendment so HD Reynolds can finish the entire twenty eighteen sewer line improvement project. It is recommended that the money stay in the current funds until such time as they are needed in six to twelve months and this will be addressed in the fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four budget. What is the pleasure of the board?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Bridges, any discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, signal so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? That motion carries unanimously. Consider adding, item K, consider adding College Street and other miscellaneous work to the twenty seventeen B Water Improvements Project. The city removed College Street and other miscellaneous work from the twenty eighteen DWI Waterline Improvements Project. The twenty seventeen B Water Improvement Project Contractor, HD Reynolds, is willing and able to add this work to their contract and the funding agency, Division of Water Infrastructure agrees with this action. The increase in cost for HD Reynolds to complete the project is approximately one hundred and eighty thousand. HD Reynolds is willing to hold their equipment and labor costs and only charge the additional cost for materials that are more than ten percent higher than their bid prices. At this time, these adjustments are still within the original amount awarded by DWI and do not require additional funds to complete the work. And you have a staff report in attachment five K. Recommended action is that, uh, staff recommends awarding HD Reynolds the additional work by change order in the amount of approximately one point six million, which includes a contingency for the increased material costs. What is the pleasure of the board?
Motion.
I think that was Commissioners Toby and Khan, and is there a discussion on the motion? And I see Commissioner Gilry.
Um, the first sentence here says it was removed, the city removed College Street, what, what were the circumstances of removing it initially? Or, or when did we?
This, this was originally in the contract for Metra Industries to do and we um, had to, uh, but just felt it was in the best interest of the city to remove that.
I got you, I, I, I'm, I'm caught up again, I'm good, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? All in favor of the motion, signal so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? That motion carries unanimously, okay, now we're going to skip to the uh, add-on item of the roundabout and so give me a moment to pull that out. As part of the DOT resurfacing project or prior to the completion of that project, the NC DOT is exploring the creation of the roundabout at Williamsboro and New College and Gillum Streets. NC DOT notified the city at the end of last meeting the possibility of creating the roundabout prior to the paving of Williamsboro Street, which is currently scheduled to take place in the next thirty to forty-five days. Staff recommends that the board authorize city staff proceed with the discussions with NC DOT to implement the intersection improvements at Williamsboro and New College and Gillum Streets. And also that we adopt a resolution of intersection improvements at Williamsboro and New College and Gillum Streets. This resolution will be void if all city departments have not signed off on the intersection improvements. And you have attachments, Williamsboro Street Roundabout Example, a resolution of intersection improvements at Williamsboro and New College and Gillum Streets, and yes, that's it, okay, so we have the resolution with the certification page by the reporting officer. And then the last page is the image of what the proposed roundabout uh, and curb enhancements to accommodate it could look like. And so uh, with that, is there a desire for a motion or conversation with city engineer?
I need one question, will it reduce any parking spaces?
Pardon?
Will it reduce any parking spaces?
I don't believe there is any parking and uh, you've got two entrances that will be closed, um, and no more driveway that is on Williamsboro Street at the bank and the county parking. There may be one parking space in front of the other county lot, in front of the magistrates office. There might be one parallel parking space there.
I don't see any, I just wanted to make sure, all right, because I know what parking's like around town, thank you.
Yes, Commissioner Bridges?
Now, now that I know fire trucks don't bend. Thank, thank you, um, I, I, I just wanted to make sure that the same system will be put in place wherein the trucks can get through safely.
The fire department is the primary concern for holding off and saying, you know, all departments need to uh, sign off on this is so that PD and fire can make sure that they can adequately get through that intersection and that can be designed with them in mind.
So you'll be doing all the measurements and looking very carefully to make sure that it could work?
Turning radius and, yes, and then would have the mountable curbs if necessary.
So conceivably maybe no longer a loss engine back to a round. But, but Amy?
I have been convinced, I, I have been convinced, and, and I-
It's a, it's a NC DOT project, they make the call, it's not, it's not, it's not the board's call.
That, that, no sir, no, no, that's not a good answer, that's not a good answer, that ain't what I say.
So, I-
Citizens always need to be, help, help say so in these things.
You know, and, and I'm not disregarding that comment, but I'm just saying I have been convinced now that roundabouts are good. I mean, I, I really think they're safer and they help the flow of traffic. I mean, you know, that roundabout near our post office has really been great, so, that's what all we do.
Yes, Commissioner Gilry?
I was wondering if we've had any feedback regarding the turning radius even in the one by the post office though? It seems a little awkward, um, and it's not because the vehicle is so big or anything. It almost seems like the circle is, is, is too big or too small or too sharp or something, I mean, has anyone else experienced or anyone said anything about that?
They have not to me.
Okay.
I, is it, re- it is my understanding that the intent of the engineering behind that, making it a fairly, I think what you're saying is it's a, it's a very precise uh, turn for cars is traffic calming so that people don't blast, they have to slow down going into the intersection. And you know, whereas before, I, you might be staying at the intersection, at either of the intersections at Spring Street and waiting forever as, as traffic is going on, on Main. Now everybody has equal access, but to make sure that people don't whip through the intersection. Am I, am I correct in understanding that that's some of the intent, Ms. Rapliff?
That, that is correct, uh, circles are considered a traffic calming measure. They also look at the existing right of way that is available to create a roundabout and if they can work within that existing right of way versus acquiring more, more property or land to put it on. So it's both, you know, for traffic calming, traffic slows down when it goes through it and we usually have to pay a little bit more attention to what they're doing. And then um, we also want to make sure that uh, with the respect to the one at Spring and Main that is in the historic district and make sure that we didn't disturb anything that was considered historic.
Well, I, I guess my concern and what, what I've heard and, and personally experienced, it's the right show, the, the right passenger side curving that jets out, not, not the roundabout, it's, well, not the circle part, but the curving there that makes it just a little awkward for some reason, and I was just curious.
It, there are, you know, parts of the roundabout, if you notice, that do have the vertical curve and parts of it that do have the mountable curve. And so, you know, we want to make sure that where it is necessary in order for the fire department to get their fire trucks through, they've got that capability, um, and for the other areas we want, you know, to actually direct the traffic to stay within that circle.
So I think what my colleague was referring to is what we would call the apron, which goes around the circle itself, or you're talking about the side, the-
No, no, these here.
The bump outs.
Yeah, the bump outs is making it an awkward, I mean, very awkward, even for a regular, the regular vehicle, but, but, but I'm, I'm good. I mean, I was just curious if anyone had shared any insight or their experience with it or concerns?
Not with regard to that, but I, you know, we have to discuss it with anybody that has concerns.
Amy, to make, make sure I'm understanding this correctly, NC DOT approached the city of Oxford about the roundabout and not in reverse?
Yes, uh, last Thursday DOT sent me an email and said that this was something that they were looking at like the Spring Street, Main Street intersection, that it was a low cost, high impact in their opinion. This also does tie back, it doesn't directly in the twenty sixteen downtown master plan discuss a roundabout at this particular location, but it does talk about traffic calming measures on Williamsboro. And so this would be a traffic calming measure that um, could assist with slowing traffic down.
Yes.
Which is what Commissioner Bridges I think had brought up on that, that section between that intersection and the one at Main Street.
In, in other areas, we are looking to, you know, as part of the downtown master plan and, and what the board has seen in the past is doing bulb outs there at Melano's and the courthouse, you know, for that crosswalk in that vicinity because that is what is going to assist in pedestrian safety really in that area is, is reducing the amount of asphalt that they need to cross and creating that open space where vehicles aren't parked and people are walking right out from behind a vehicle and you don't see them until they're out in the road.
Excellent, thank you, yes, Commissioner Longpens?
Um, yeah, I mean, going, going back to traffic calming, I mean, let's face it, people fly through there. The, the intersections, you know, awkward to begin with and then plus when you're coming through in the afternoon, the sun is shining in your face.
God, that's right.
All right, so this, to me, this looks like it's gonna have some, some bulb outs for increased safety for pedestrians and let's not forget, you know, I've heard multiple times here that, you know, people fly by the courthouse right there. And let's also not forget, someone just got run over a couple of months ago over there. So, I mean, I think it's a great idea, so.
Excellent, so yes, Commissioner Gilry?
Part, part of the problem though at the courthouse though is a hill coming down and you don't see them until you're on top of the person there. So even a bulb out may not even make that one much safer, um, coming back down toward CVS store from the courthouse. That hill there at that, that light there, it, 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 it really creates major hazards if there's a, if-
If, if the bulb outs do help because you don't have cars parked, usually you have about one and a half parking spaces on either side so there's a little bit more visibility as cars approach that bulb out in, in that intersection with the pedestrian crossing. It's easier to see the individuals, um, but the hill, it does-
But the difference, yeah, it's a short span there between seeing them and you're right at the crosswalk. I mean, it's, it's just dangerous right in there.
It's, it's just about mitigating risk, right?
Yeah.
It's not gonna be perfect.
No, it's not.
And as long as fire and police sound off for me.
Okay, any further questions?
I just have one question, so these are incomplete plans, when do you anticipate they'll be providing the final renderings?
Yes, sir.
Since it seems like they, they, they're ready to go fairly quick.
Um, correct, they want to move forward pretty quick and so if we let DOT know that we would like to see them move forward with us, then they will work with us in the turning radius of the, you know, vehicles that need to get through that intersection to make sure that it's peaceful before we actually proceed, but I would say they'd be turning around pretty quickly.
And then the um, the question I have is with that, do you anticipate them needing to acquire any land? And I ask this just so I can, if I need to recuse myself, being a-
They have put this current plan that's on paper in the current existing right of way. If in order to accommodate turning radius, it will see whether or not we would- If, in order to accommodate turning radius, we'll see whether or not we would need to have any additional land or not. So at this time, the answer is no, we don't have any need for additional lands, but we have not finished the design, and it could show up.
In that case, I'll ask our city attorney if he has any recommendations, seeing that I have a principal on one of the properties in that corner, if I should recuse myself in the event that they need to acquire land?
Well, out of an abundance of caution, that's probably a good idea, but the board needs to excuse you for voting, so.
Okay. That's, yeah, which is why I asked the question.
The board has to vote to, for you to be recused, so.
Okay. Colleagues, do you, if there are motion to excuse Commissioner Khan from voting-
There's a motion.
There's a motion.
Motion by Commissioner Bridges. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor of excusing Commissioner Bridges, signal so by saying aye.
Nope, 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 nope.
I'm sorry, I don't know why my, my synapses are crossed tonight. Commissioner Khan from voting, signal so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? I apologize to both of you. You are accused, and do we, so we have a-
Motion to go forward.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a motion to-
We have a motion.
Let me, let me go back to releasing, involved in the discussion, let me go back to the recommendations. Do we have a motion to authorize city staff to proceed with the discussions with NC DOT to implement the intersection improvements at Williamsboro and New College and Gillum Streets, and to adopt a resolution of intersection improvements at Williamsboro and New College and Gillum Streets, with an understanding that the resolution will be void if all city departments have not signed off on the intersection of improvements? Is there a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mayor Protem, and I think Commissioner Toby. Any further discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, signal so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? And that motion passes unanimously with a vote of five in favor of two numbers. Okay, excellent. Thank you very much, Ms. Bratlov, and colleagues, for the engaging discussion. And with that, we go forward to item, or go back to item L, which is to consider signing with Novo Solutions for a citywide work order system. City staff met via Zoom with four different work order system providers over the past few months, and agreed that Novo Solutions is our best alternative. Our current work order provider has been purchased by a competitor, and they are phasing out their services completely on March 31st. Currently, Public Works, Engineering, and Customer Service are the primary users, but the new system will allow us to expand to parks and rec, planning and zoning, allowing departments to share information and streamline our processes. And in attachment five L, you have the entire proposal from Novo Solutions. Recommended action is that staff recommends approval of the contract with an April 1st start. What is the pleasure of the board?
Motion.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Toby. Is there any discussion? Okay, I do have two questions. What is the cost of this versus the cost of what we had? And I guess that would be for Mr. Blasco?
After the initial startup cost, it would be nine thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars per year. Our current is eight thousand five hundred and sixty-nine.
Okay, hang on, nine thousand nine fifty per year, and the current is how much?
Eight thousand five hundred and fifty.
Eight thousand five hundred and fifty-nine. And what are the initial startup costs going to be?
Thirteen thousand eight hundred and fifty-one.
And that's for all of the software and training?
That depends for three months of service, software. Basically, we're doing this from the roundabout.
Right.
That's training, too.
Mm-hmm. Okay. And, and so, is this money already in, being taken from all departments? How, where's the money coming from?
Are any, does all the budget for this?
It's, it's all in the chief engineer's budgets. We, it is taken care of.
Okay, so it's already, it's covered under the current budget? I guess I was asking you, was there a needed budget amendment or?
There's not a needed budget amendment.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you. Any other question? Okay, all in favor of the motion, signal so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? That motion carries unanimously. And we have, before we move to the consent agenda, we have that the city manager wanted to request that the board approve a memorandum of understanding between the city of Oxford and Hocke Ung, our former finance director, and it reads, this agreement is being entered into by the city of Oxford and former finance director, Hocke Ung. The city agrees to pay Hocke Ung the sum of sixty dollars an hour on an as-needed basis, not to exceed four hours per week. What is the pleasure of the board?
Motion.
Okay, that was like, multiple motion, I used to hear Commissioner Bridges and Mayor Protem field. Any discussion?
I just have a question. Was there a compelling event that needed us, that I guess, required us to come into this memorandum, or was this something that you anticipated?
I'm sorry.
Was there a, was there a compelling event that brought about this particular piece, or was this something that was, you considered, had already considered?
It'd already been considered. It wasn't a compelling event. We talked to Hock before we left and said, you know, you've got a lot of knowledge in this area, and we're putting a budget together, we might need you on occasion, and that was it, and that was from the very beginning.
Okay, no worries, just, just curious.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? All in favor of the motion, signal so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? That motion carries unanimously. Okay, we move forward to the consent agenda, which is to accept the January 23rd, 2023 finance report by finance director, Hock Ung, and you have that at your seat.
I'm sorry, that shouldn't have happened.
Okay. I take that back, and presented to us by interim finance director and current HR director, Melissa LeBarre, and approving the 2023 meeting minutes for February 6th, February 14th, and the board retreat February 10th and 11th. What is the pleasure of the board?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Bridges. Any discussion? All in favor of approving the consent agenda, signal so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? That motion carries unanimously. And at this time, we have, oh, before we go into closed session, any additional comments? Commissioner Khan?
I, none at this time, other than to preferably request that we have maybe a brief recess prior to going into closed session.
I think, I think that's very reasonable. Okay. Mr. Gilry? Commissioner Toby?
Just one thing, I just want to thank Matthew Cox for organizing the cleanup at the Greenways the last weekend, and thank the citizens. I think they did a great job. I couldn't be there, I had a prior engagement. I really wanted to be there, but I want to thank them for organizing this, and that it's helping the whole town, it really is. Thank you very much for doing it.
I'm going to do it next time.
I will do.
All of you do.
I've had, I was on grandmother duty, and unfortunately, with a sick grandchild, so unable to go. Excellent. Yes, Commissioner Bridges?
I don't have anything.
Okay, Mayor Protem?
Again, thanks staff, fire chief, for such an outstanding report. That's it.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Lumpkins?
I love them.
And Mr. Harold?
I'll echo Commissioner Collins' comments.
Okay. And Ms. Burnett?
Yeah, ma'am.
We are happy to see you here tonight. And so with that, and I have nothing either, other than to say thank you to everybody who came out, I would certainly echo Mr. Toby's comments, thanking Ox Can for their work to make a difference in the community, and, and everybody who showed up tonight. And with that, is there, let me read the item. So the Oxford Board of Commissioners will adjourn into a closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318 dot paragraph 2A S. It looks like S, is it supposed to be five?
Yes.
Oh, well, okay, to establish or instruct the staff or agent concerning the negotiation of the price and terms of contract concerning the acquisition of real property located at, or to establish or instruct the staff or agent concerning the negotiations of the amount of compensation or other terms of employment or contract. And that should be a five. And pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318 dot 2A, and you've got G, but it should be six. To consider the qualifications, confidence, performance, condition of appointment of appointment of a public officer, employee, or prospective public officer, employee, to hear or investigate a complaint, charge, or grievance against a public officer or employee. Is there a motion to go into closed session?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Toby, and we'll take a five-minute recess. And all in favor of the motion for the record, signal so by saying aye.